Good evening, welcome. And I'd like to call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, February 13th, 2024 at 5:30 PM to order. We'll now have an invocation from Pastor Farron from KNLB Christian Radio. And then we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Lake Havasu City Robotics Team, Mighty Minions.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, as we've come into this place, Lord, to conduct business for our beautiful community, Lord, we first want to say thank you. Let it, Lord, let us not ever take for granted the wonderful blessings that you have given us in this city in which we live, Lord, and the people which serve and serve for us in this community. Lord, as we go about the business of this community, we pray for wisdom, guidance, and direction, Lord. We pray for our mayor, our city council members, Lord, especially our first responders, those, Lord, that put themselves in harm's way to keep us safe. May your angels be around them. And Lord, let everything in this business meeting be conducted in a way that honors you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're so excited to have the Mighty Minions with us. If you'd like to share a little bit about your organization.
Hello, my name is Molly Hooks. I'm the head coach of the Mighty Minions. And it's been a wonderful journey. We actually started six years ago with a little tiny group of three little kids. And one of them is still with us. And it's, we have been competing now for five years under what's called First FLL Challenge Team. We have competed at regionals. We have qualified for state four times. And now we have qualified for our Second World Event where we will be competing with about 144 teams from around the world. And it's truly, they do the work. We are guidance, we help, we nudge, but it is truly them doing the work and the passion. And I couldn't be prouder of all the kids. Plus, we've graduated our first set out last year, so we actually have a new ones. And so our old ones stepped up as mentors and setting a great example. And we're just very proud and thank you for having us here, and I hope you enjoy their presentation. So I'm a really proud coach.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello, Mayor Sheehy and city council members.
I'm September.
I'm Ashlyn.
I'm Quaid.
I'm Lyric.
I'm Sophia.
I'm Emily.
And I'm Jackson. We ranked fourth place at Arizona State Championships this past January, and now we're heading for Worlds. This is Bob. He has a more efficient design and his programming is more precise.
Our attachments are constructed with the same frontal loading design.
In addition, in addition to robot design and performance, a major part of our competition includes the innovation project. As a team, we developed a concept and two prototypes. Here's our presentation.
A problem since the COVID shutdowns is mental health issues have exponentially grown, impacting youth and the elderly. The top three mental health issues are depression, anxiety, and PTSD. These also affect physical health, creating different ways and techniques to bring calmness and peace in people's emotions are critical.
Our solution and focus this season is to help those with mental health issues through an immersive experience of the arts, paintings, color, sound, and aroma.
For our final concept, we present the Meditation Creation Station, aka MCS.
The goal of MCS is to sense a person's emotions by using biometrics and help relieve levels of anxiety and depression by using relaxation meditation and also viewing peaceful and calming paintings.
We plan to launch MCS locally and then expand to other locations and countries. We have plans for a personal version, MCS, the home version.
We researched biometrics and mental health and selected two biometric devices, facial recognition and fingerprint, sensing heart rate and body temperature.
We hold leadership meetings and to provide direct direction for our team's goals and milestones.
Our youth mentor Camilla guides us and evaluates us along our journey.
Our minion September is a local artist who displayed her masterpiece paintings as an art gallery, and we described how each painting made us feel.
We also researched other paintings. Here's our selections.
Calming Blue Sea. The clouds are calming. It's a painting of a sunny day, and it might clear their mind.
Rumble, this is calming. The combination of colors is perfect. There's a lot of movement allowing one to relax and visualize different emotions and things within the painting.
Starry Night. The paint strokes are calming, and it can remind you of calming places.
This is calming because all the blue and yellow colors, those colors make me feel calm. If someone is feeling sad or anxious, the colors might help them and make them feel happy.
The painting makes me calm because it makes me tired, so I don't freak out. This is a good choice because it'll, it'll make people feel happy and calm and be ready for stuff.
Creed on Peace Painting. It's relaxing and makes me feel sleepy because the colors are light. I also see the ocean, and it calms me. This is a good choice because when you see the ocean, you feel calm.
Dr. Patel, professor and vice chair for research at UCSD specializes in mapping and healthy meditation for mental health diseases.
He stressed that meditation can bring a person to a mentally clear and calm state and contemplate, and contemplation helps give them an inner vision.
Dr. Simpson, local industry, community leaders, and our youth mentor also provided valuable feedback.
As we move forward, our home version will have customized upgrades.
Finger biometrics.
Claw LED is around the frame.
Sounds of rain or soft wind chimes.
And aromatherapy.
We are proud to represent Arizona in our hometown city, Lake Havasu City, at Worlds.
On behalf of the Mighty Minions, thank you Mayor Sheehy and city council members. We truly appreciate your time and continued support.
Thank you, Mighty Minions. What a great presentation. I'm going to ask if you can come to the front of the diocese here, and then if my colleagues and council will make a special presentation. And Steve, do you have a wireless mic I can use?
Thank you.
Yeah, great job today. So we're here to celebrate something special. We're going to do a proclamation from my office, the office of the mayor, naming this week Engineers Week, Welcome to the Future, honoring our Mighty Minions, ambassadors of first, February 18th through the 24th, 2024, in honor of all of the work that you're going to be doing at Nationals. We're really excited for you. Whereas National Engineers Week was started in 1951 by the National Society of Professional Engineers in conjunction with President George Washington's birthday, as he is considered the nation's first engineer, notably for his surveying work. And whereas engineers use their scientific and technical knowledge and skills in creative and innovative ways to fulfill society's needs. And whereas the engineering professions provide the public with a number of necessities, strengthening infrastructure, including LEED-certified structures, green streets, and reinforcing bridges, computer software and mechanical systems that are eco-friendly to clean and protect our environment, clean drinking water, and reusable water systems for communities, and innovative renewable energy systems to power homes and businesses. And whereas engineers face major technological challenges of our time, from rebuilding towns devastated by natural disaster and constructing effective ways to preserve our natural resources, to transforming lives throughout biotechnology and designing information systems that will speed our country into the 21st century. And whereas First Robotics encourages our young science, engineering, and math students to realize the practical power of their knowledge and skills to help communities and others worldwide. And whereas we have the distinct privilege of having the Mighty Minions, ambassadors of first, from Lake Havasu City, dedicated to making our community a better place to live with their outstanding masterpiece innovation project, Meditation Creation Station. Jackson, September, Ashlyn, Quaid, Emily, Lyric, Sophia, and our youth mentor, Camilla. Now therefore, I call Sheehy, the mayor of Lake Havasu City, Arizona, to hereby proclaim the week of February 18th through the 24th, 2024, as Engineers Week in honor of our Mighty Minions, and urge all citizens to recognize the far-reaching contributions engineers have made, as well as acknowledge the tremendous impact they continue to have on our lives. Congratulations. Yeah, again, thank you so much to our Mighty Minions, and they are heading to Worlds in Massachusetts in June, so they have a long trip ahead of them, and we'll be rooting them on the entire way. All right, next item on our agenda is number four, the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you please call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Jenny Koch. Jim Dolan.
Aki.
David Lane.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cameron Moses.
Here.
Mayor Kal Sheehy.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item five is the consent agenda. Would any of the council members like to remove any of the items for separate discussion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor.
Councilmember Dolan.
Motion to accept consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Vice Mayor Moses. Is there? There is no discussion, so it's time to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Item six is our correspondence, communications, petitions, announcements, and the city manager report. Item 6.1 is our investment report as of December 31st, 2023. Ms. Olson has included this in the packet, and it is available online for anyone to review. Moving on to item 6.2 is to announce our vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams.
Mayor and city council, there are several vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is the listing of those vacancies. Board of Adjustment, two regular members, two alternate members, and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, one student member. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall and also available on the city's website at LHCaz.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 6.3 is our city manager's report. Good evening, Mr. Knutson.
Hi, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. Start this manager's report this evening with some sad news for us, but some good news for Doug. This is a well-deserved retirement from someone who has a stellar career with Lake Havasu City Police Department for more than 20 years. Captain Doug Whitaker retires this Friday after 27 years of dedicated police service to our community. He was first hired as a police officer on March 24th, 1997. He was promoted just three years later to senior police officer, and just three years later in 2003, he was promoted to police sergeant. Three years later, it's a pattern. He was promoted to a police lieutenant, and then he was promoted to police captain on August 2nd, 2014, where he is finishing out his career. Good luck to you, Doug, and thank you for many, many years of dedicated service. More, some great news coming from the police department. Just last week, the Lake Havasu City Police Department was awarded a reaccreditation through the Arizona Association of Chiefs of Police, Arizona Law Enforcement Accreditation Program. Through the accreditation process, the department successfully demonstrated that they comply with the best common practices and industry standards in law enforcement. The accreditation allows us to prove our long-term commitment to being an efficient, effective, productive, and professional police agency. The city's police department must comply with 174 standards to achieve accredited status. It is voluntary and, it is voluntary and valid for a four-year period, during which time the agency submits annual reports attesting to their continued compliance with those standards under which they were initially accredited. I'd like to thank Chief Sterling, Lieutenant Chad Williams, and their team for taking the initiative to demonstrate that they meet commonly accepted practices and industry standards for efficient, effective, productive, and quality operations. So this is the reaccreditation process. When Lake Havasu City Police Department was first accredited, four years prior, we were the fourth agency and the third city in the state to go through this process. So a huge achievement for our Havasu PD. Our fire department has sort of good news. The, the new engine that we ordered back in December of '21, more than two years ago, is scheduled to arrive in the next few months. So I know Chief Plafis is very eager, and his team is very eager for its arrival, and we're hoping that's going to take place in April or May. The pictures of the new engine are displayed. The body has been mounted to the chassis, and they are continuing to assemble on the pumper. When it arrives, I think we could bring it to the council meeting, and it'll be out front for everybody to see. But two and a half years from the time the council approved that, that purchase. A huge shout out for the generous donations in our community for the installation of a shade cover at Jack Hardy Park. The new shade cover is placed over the benches that were donated by the Kiwanis Club back in April of last year. The donors that it helped included the Daybreakers Lions Club, the Arizona Honing and Shade, Manzel Welding, Havasu Hardware, Campbell Ready Mix, and Cook Brothers Concrete Pumping. Thank you for everyone involved, and thank you to River Scene Magazine for the use of their photo. Lake Havasu City and the University of Arizona hosted the ninth annual Water Festival event at the Island Ball Field earlier today for our local fourth graders. The event highlighted water conservation and what our youth can do to help. Several city employees volunteered and taught some of the sessions. You can see Suzie Fox with our procurement division and Vince Lockyer from Island Treatment Plant in the center photo. With spring right around the corner, our mayor and council members are very busy in the community, celebrating and kicking off events for various local organizations. First, I'd like to congratulate you, Mayor, for being honored as Hero of the Year. That was a recognition coming from the Cancer Association at one of their recent events. The organization thanked you for your personal support and contributions throughout the years. Vice Mayor Moses, you and Councilmember David Lane kicked off the annual winter fest for the Lake Havasu Area Chamber of Commerce. And Mayor, you and Vice Mayor Moses presented a proclamation to the Lake Havasu High School Future Business Leaders of America, and also to our Lady of the Lake Catholic School, reclaiming Catholic Schools Week. And finally, Mayor, you and Councilmember Campbell and Councilmember Lynn participated in the Night to Shine event to welcome the attendees to their annual prom night held at Calvary Baptist Church. Again, thank you to River Scene Magazine for the use of their photos. And Mayor and council members visited the Havasu Stitchers event. It was at the Aquatic Center where it was selected, where each selected their favorite quilts. And Vice Mayor Cameron Moses presented a proclamation in honor of their annual show. According to a recent article from Moving Waldo, Lake Havasu City is one of the five safest cities to live in Arizona with the best quality of life. That was just announced just a couple weeks ago. Their ranking methodology is based on a careful analysis of crime rates derived from Arizona Crime Stats of 2023. All cities range between 4 to 90 crimes per 1,000, with Lake Havasu City ranking at number four at 39 crimes per 1,000 population. I think with last year, we were number six, so we're four, and that's a, a great way to move. Over the past few weeks, we've been advertising our quest to seek feedback and the process of conducting a second bridge feasibility study to ensure the study meets the needs and desires of the community. At the first public meeting held on Monday, January 29th, we had a 100 citizens attempt, and we gained practical and positive feedback. Whether it was at that, that open house on that Monday or in the comments we've collected since, we've had three, over 330 comments that have come from the public regarding the second bridge study. We've posted the displayed slide and the QR code that you see on the screen, and, and which allows people to, to share their, their comments. The feedback and comments received throughout the survey will be included within the study and, and our final report. The public comment online portion ends today, but we will, we'll reopen it to other phases where we'll seek additional feedback in the coming weeks and months. Please save the date. It's, it's already here again. Friday, March 29th at 10:30 AM at the Friends of the Fair Rodeo Grounds. The city, along with Elks Lodge 2399, the Friends of the Fair, Marine Corps League 757, and many veteran organizations are all hosting another Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day outdoor cookout event. Lake Havasu City is a Vietnam War commemorative partner, and we're very proud to honor our Vietnam veterans at this annual event. All veterans are invited to this outdoor cookout. There is no RSVP required. Simply show up. For more information, please contact the mayor's office. And lastly, a reminder that city offices are closed on Monday, February 19th, observance of Presidents' Day. Police and Fire Departments, services provided by Police and Fire are unaffected, as always. And the Aquatic Center is, will be open for their normally scheduled exercise and lap swim sessions. All other city offices and services will resume normal schedules on Tuesday, February 20th. Mayor and council, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson. We'll move on to item seven, our public hearings. During our public hearings, we will have an opportunity for citizens to engage in the process. We'll have each item introduced. We'll open up the public hearing. At that point, we would encourage feedback from our citizens. You just make your way to the podium, and you state your name. You will have time. There's a light indicator box next to Ms. Williams. Green means you have time. Yellow means one minute remaining, and red means that your time is up for that particular item. At the end of our agenda, we'll also have a call to the public. That's where citizens can address the council on anything in the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City, and I'll go over the guidelines of that at that time. But if you would like to engage with us in a two-way conversation, I encourage you to do it during the public hearings, because we can have a two-way conversations. Call to the public, we cannot. All right, we'll start with item 7.1, which is presentation from Clifton Larson Allen LLP on the fiscal year 2023 audit results and any findings. Good evening, Ms. Ware.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I wanted to introduce the next item. The city's required to have an independent annual audit, which reviews financial records, financial statements, internal controls, and federal grant compliance. The Arizona State statute requires our auditing firm to present the audit results to the city council in a regular council meeting. The audit results will be presented this evening. Our audit firm is Clifton Larson Allen. They're experts in governmental accounting and auditing. And Richard Gillespie is on line to present the results remotely.
Thank you, Trina. Thank you, Trina, and good evening, Mayor Sheehy and members of council. The principal on the engagement, Sandy Cronstrom, isn't on the call tonight, but she was, she was the principal on it, oversaw the entire engagement, had the final sign-off of the financial statements, as well as the audit testing. I'll briefly go over the audit process. We examine, verify management's assertions that the financial statements are free from material misstatement, and then we give an opinion on those, on that assertion. One thing we don't do is we don't get absolute assurance, or else we'd be out there every single day testing every transaction. So we do a risk-based approach and then give reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatement. And during that process, we include any findings and recommendations. And lastly, our audit results are communicated to council because we, we work for you all and not, not for management, and that keeps us independent during the audit process. So the deliverables included in the council packet should include the Communication to Governance, the Annual Conference of Financial Report, or called the ACFA, and that includes audit opinion. And then the Single Audit Report, which includes the Government Auditing Standard Report and the Report on Major Federal Programs and the Schedule of Federal Expenditures of Federal Awards as well. And then lastly is the HERF Report, which is a state compliance report on which we do procedures on. So the governance communication includes the accounting policies used by management during the preparation of the financial statements, as well as accounting estimates. And also, there's attached uncorrected misstatements, which includes misstatements that we identified throughout the audit that weren't material but met a certain threshold that we accumulate to make sure them combined in whole don't result in a material misstatement in the financial statements. All right, then Annual Conference of Financial Report, and includes three, three components. One is the basic financial statements, which includes, which we actually opine on, and then the combining and individual fund financial statements, which we give in relation to opinion, which means the totals as a whole, we compare that to the total financials to make sure that they all, all agree. And then, as well as the required supplementary information, the statistical section, and then the introductory section, which we don't give an opinion on, but we do, we do review for reasonableness and make sure that it's consistent with the financial statements. Overall, we rendered an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion on the financial statements. All right, next is the Single Audit, Audit Results. This includes the Government Auditing Standard Report, which is internal controls over financial reporting. There were no material weaknesses or, and no, no material weaknesses and no significant deficiencies in internal controls over the financial statement preparation. As far as the, the federal compliance side, which is the Uniform Guidance Report, it was unmodified as well, which is clean opinion. There was no matters of non-compliance, and there was no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control over compliance. The two major federal programs that we tested during fiscal year '23 includes the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, which was initiated through the American Rescue Plan Act, totaling about $1.5 million of expenditures, as well as the Airport Improvement Program, which was about $5.3 million of federal expenditures. In totality, we tested 76% of the city's federal awards expended during fiscal year '23. And once again, no, no, no compliance or internal controls on either reports issued for that. And then next, there was also the Highway User Revenue Fund Compliance, which is an examination report to determine compliance as to whether expenditures from Highway User Revenue Fund monies were spent in accordance to Arizona State statutes. We select accounts payable transactions, as well as payroll transactions, to make sure the city's in, in compliance, and there were no findings for that. And then lastly, that probably isn't included in the packet, but it has been issued on our side and given, given to city personnel, is the Annual Expenditure Limitation Report. The expenditure limitation for the city was $143 million, and the amount subject to limitation was $107 million. So the city came well, well below their limitation on the expenditure limitation report. All right, that concludes my brief presentation. I'll leave it open to any questions from council.
Thank you, Mr. Gillespie. Are there any questions from members of the council, from Mr. Gillespie or from Ms. Ware? Yeah, thank you for the thorough analysis that you provided here. It's, your presentation actually followed exactly what, what we have in front of us as well, so thank you for that. And also, a big thank you to Ms. Olson, to Ms. Ware, and your teams for a great job. So lots of boring words were just said, but those boring words mean that, that our finances are in order, and it's because of the good accounting and procedures that you all implement on a daily basis, so thank you very much. With no questions from members of the council, open up the public hearing. Would any member of the community like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Any additional questions or comments or entertaining motion?
Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Lane.
Yeah, first of all, I just wanted to reiterate that I agree what a great job our staff does year after year after year with these audits and the awards that you guys get. It just shows that, that our staff is doing a terrific job, and we truly do appreciate that. And with that, I move to accept Lake Havasu City's audited annual financial report and audit results for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023.
I'll second even the first part.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Vice Mayor Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Gillespie, and again, thank you, Ms. Ware, for the presentation. Moving on to item 7.2 is Adopt Resolution Number 24-3724, adopting by reference a fiscal sustainability, sustainability policy. Ms. Olson.
Thank you. The item before you is to adopt, to formally adopt and update the fiscal sustainability policy. About two years ago, council, during the budget process. five years' worth of average revenues. Raised that to 50% so that we would have at least six months of working capital on hand, so that we would have time to react in case there was any kind of economic downturn. That would give us an opportunity to make adjustments in the organization, to stay within our available revenues. The other changes in the fiscal sustainability policy are just minor. I added it, included it, changed the tracking changes on what I attached, so that you were able to see what those changes were. You'll see they're mostly grammatical punctuation. Some terminology, we removed the irrigation district language that was in there. And other than that, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Are there questions from members of council? Yeah, so again, this just formalizes what we're already doing and the direction we're doing it now, so that it moves from 25% to 50%, but again, that equates from three months to six months, basically, is what we gave direction for. All right, seeing no questions, we'll open up the public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
Motion.
Please.
I move to adopt resolution 24-3724, adopting by reference a fiscal sustainability policy.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan, a second from Vice Mayor Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is item 7.3, adopt ordinance number 24-1325, approving a planned development rezoning of 700 London Bridge Road from mixed-use general district, MUG, to mixed-use general planned development district, and approving a general development plan. Mr. Gilbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, members of the council. This particular application is regarding a 12.06 acre piece of property that was purchased from the Arizona Land Trust and was rezoned by this body in April, on April 27th, 2021, to MUG. And at the same time, the land use was changed to commercial mixed use. And at the time, the developer was not certain what they were going to do with the land, and they came back to visit with us once they had a plan, and they realized that the MUG zoning was not sufficient to accomplish what it is they wanted and intend to do. So let me go over some basic slides here, showing the zoning again as MUG. The state park is to the west, across London Bridge Road. To the north is C2PD across Industrial Boulevard. To the east, more C2, a lot of storage units there. And further south, you have more park and C2. So it's an entirely commercial area. There's almost no residential in any close proximity to this project. The conceptual development plan I have up on the screen right now, I had to turn it kind of 90 degrees, so it sits north up to the top. What they're planning to do is to create a restaurants pad at the south end, to create a number of storage units on the very east end, adjacent to the storage units that already exist off Industrial. And then the rest of it will be what I like to call a carriage house, European carriage house style of residential. And this next diagram will kind of show what that is. That's where you have the garage on the bottom floor, and the full living is on the second floor. So this concept, as shown on the development plan, was not feasible under the MUG zoning. Let me go over some other important facts here. The applicant is present tonight, as is a representative of the state park system that manages the facility across the street, so they will have comment. If you notice in the comments in the staff report, comments received from other department agencies, there is being required a traffic impact analysis, and additional right-of-way is going to need to be dedicated for both industrial and London Bridge Road, and that is very likely to include turn lanes. We don't know the total extent of that yet, as this project develops, since all they're asking for right now is a zoning change. And there were a number of commentary utility companies, but other than that, the proposed change meets all the general plan land use designation and conformity requirements, and it meets all the findings required for planned developments. There is an additional factor involved, and that is, as part of this request to have a planned development overlay placed over the MUG zone, there is some specific code relief that the applicant's requesting, and I have that up on the overlay here. Section 14.02.04.04.04.04 under our, in our development code, under the heading of additional development standards, that that not be required to be enforced as it creates severe building orientation issues for the buildings in the project due to requirements for doorways having to lead to sidewalks and 65% of the primary building frontage be located no farther than 20 feet from the front property line. And I'm going to take a couple steps back here. If you look at the development plan on the north end, while the buildings on the west might be able to accomplish that, the ones on the north certainly can't. It just doesn't fit with the overall layout.
Counsel.
Mayor, Council, thank you for having us tonight. Luke Still representing the Project Desert Land Group. We're representing the owner on this and have been involved since the original purchase of this property. So it's a pretty straightforward thing. I think Chris did a good job of presenting what we're trying to do. But when we came in in 2021, we didn't have a specific plan because it was in a state land holding type of pattern for so many years. We really didn't have a specific plan. We thought we might do some commercial mixed uses. We wanted, the main reason we came in before is we wanted some kind of residential component to go with it because it is a pretty large parcel and that seems to be the highest and best use. The views that are right there are tremendous and it's walking distance to Windsor. And so there's lots of reasons that a residential component there makes sense. When we got a little further down the road, we started grading the project. We found a unrecorded easement kind of the hard way. We worked with Unisource. We worked with Arizona State Parks to get that issue resolved. That issue is now resolved and out of the way. So we started moving forward again with this. The commercial uses that we want to do were supported by the mixed use zoning that we have right now. But the residential component, because it is a multifamily and multifamily is allowed in a mixed use up to 30 feet tall, and we're not going to go that tall, but it is allowed. It's just you can't have any, every building has to have 25% commercial and we're meeting that for every building that's there. So that's the primary reason. And as Chris pointed out, there's some connection points, how far you need to be from a sidewalk for access purposes that we're asking for variance. But those are the two primary variances we're asking for. You know, we've gone through several renditions with this plan as we tried to make something work both from a market standpoint and from a physical standpoint with the site. It's a pretty challenging site because of the shape of it. It's, and how much it dives off of Industrial Boulevard down to London Bridge Road. We would like to have some other uses there, but it seems like anytime we try and create a property division for a hotel was a use that we really pushed for. Worked with a couple of hotel operators. Were unable to get, were successful with getting somebody interested, but the conversations we had, it was hard to figure out exactly where to drop in a big restaurant or a big hotel because it then blocked views for everything else we were trying to do. So after working on this with ownership, working with our engineers and kind of the city also, one of the big things that pushed the design of this is we had several entrances along London Bridge Road and Industrial Boulevard kind of penciled in at first, at least in our concept plan. It became apparent there's some dips in London Bridge Road. It became apparent from staff's perspective that it would be better to limit those as much as possible. So we've limited it now on London Bridge Road just to one entrance and on Industrial Boulevard to two entrances, which is being improved right now. We're in the process of getting a traffic study to see what kind of impacts we're going to have on that road. And we're obviously happy to work with city on mitigating those to whatever they suggest. But that's kind of the history of the project. It's not always pretty. We probably made a mistake when we got this zone the first time MG because honestly, this carriage house concept, not the extent of it or exactly how we were going to build it, that wasn't figured out, but we kind of were gearing towards that anyway. And we just, the mixed use zoning is new in Lake Havasu. I mean, it was created in 2016. I think there's only been one project permitted with, and it was one on Park Avenue with this, conforming to that 25%. It's very difficult to do and it still hasn't moved forward because we can't find anybody to occupy it. So those are the things that kind of drove us to where we're at with this project now. The design isn't final. The footprint's close to final, but how it's going to look and feel, I mean, we're going to try and do the best we can to fit into the neighborhood, to appeal to the market, to build something. I mean, the views are worth something. So it's not like we're trying to just build this as cheap as possible. We want it to look nice. We're trying to with the storage. It already sits down. We're digging it down further right next to an alley. We're across from the alley. There's existing storage. So we're trying as hard as we can to push that down and kind of put it out of sight from London Bridge Road. And when you're on London Bridge Road, it stacks up to the alley about 18 feet. And so you'll see this terracing of homes. I think it'll look actually really nice from down on the water and down on London Bridge Road as you look up. So we've done the best we can to kind of accommodate those things with all those things in mind. And ultimately, you know, the market dictates what we ultimately can do because if we don't have a participant that's willing to invest the money, we just sit there with vacant land. And this is, this is where they think the money is best spent. So with that said, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Still, in the Planning and Zoning Commission, they talked a lot about the traffic and you alluded to the traffic study. Well, what is the process of that traffic study? And when do you hope to have the results of that?
I think the traffic study is due to be back in the next two months. We engaged it right after that meeting. And the, there is, the scope of that is they'll go study, you know, how existing traffic is. They're going to look at the types of uses we're putting in there, what the average daily trip count might be during capacity times, during overflow times, et cetera, and how that's going to look on the existing traffic patterns. And then I think out of that, the city will be able to make decisions about how to mitigate those impacts as it relates to London Bridge Road and Industrial Boulevard, both respectively, kind of independently. So.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Still or for Mr. Gilbert? Councilmember Campbell?
Mayor, I just have a statement. My biggest concern is that industrial London Bridge Road entering with Windsor, of course, and I visualize that you may, we may possibly have to be putting a light in there. What is your opinion on that? Have you looked at those, that situation and do you have maybe the same concerns?
I haven't looked at where the, kind of the breaking point is for now a light is required. So if that's part of the solution down there, we're, you know, going to be good neighbors and obviously participate in a way that we think is necessary and guided by the city staff opinion. So we hope that's not the case, but obviously if that's what we need for safety, that's something we'll look at and work with.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So when this first came to us a couple of years ago, the conceptual was a little bit different. It had the carriage house, which I like the carriage house idea with the garages underneath. And will the people that buy these actually own them or are they rentals?
Those will be owned.
So these will be owned, which is a great way for people to get into the housing market that may not be able to afford a traditional home. At that time, with the conceptual drawing, there were some storage units there, but they were in the very center. You wouldn't be able to see them. We, I think we discussed that when that plan came here, but that was just for some rezoning.
Just if I could, so that I can address your question one by one. I think you might have gotten some privy to information there because it was never presented as part of the meeting, the specific plan. I know what you're talking about. Right. We went through a couple of different renditions and I think we shared that plan with you, but I'm not sure that we shared it in public or at the planning and zoning meeting. But I do understand what you're, what you're referring to.
Now, when I look at this conceptual development plan, we now have 73 storage units to 67 residential units. So it's more, to me, more of a storage unit plan with some homes thrown into it. Is there a reason why we're putting storage units here and not more carriage houses?
I mean, storage units are the permitted use. The carriage houses are the thing we're asking for. And it really came down to the site and how the site best broke apart from an elevation standpoint and from a shape standpoint. And the third dimension of it really is trying to provide the views for those carriage houses and maximize those views as much as possible. So while some people will buy one of those carriage houses and they're big, I mean, it's what I think, what I know in the past about your opinion about storage units is you'd like them to look better and be more limited if possible. And this is something that's going to replace the traditional storage unit that you and I both agree could look better in different applications. They're going to be able to park two or three boats in one of these carriage houses that's going to be stuccoed and have roof elevations. And it's going to be something that's nice, you know? I mean, it's, it's going to, I wish it was affordable to everybody, you know? I can't wave that magic wand. It's a pretty big unit though. I mean, it's 2,000 square feet of living area on most of these carriage houses. So to answer your question, it really was just driven by the functionality of the site as much as anything. We really would have liked to have a C store or a hotel as part of this site plan. And when we came in in 2021, we had high hopes of doing that. The corner, putting a C store on that corner presented a lot of problems. So then we looked at maybe a restaurant because C stores need more circulation. There's certain components about developing them. And on a pinched corner already, it was with the elevation changes, it was just becoming very problematic. So that's kind of how we ended up here at this current plan. And we do have some interest in the restaurant already. We do have, you know, obviously some, the planning and zoning meeting was great. We got like three calls about how they could buy one of these after they saw the article in the paper. So that was good. And, you know, overall, I think the market's going to like it. It's, it seems to have a lot of positive comments so far. It's hard to make something that's perfect for everybody. And this is a really unique, really special piece of land and there's not a lot of large land parcels left. So we have done the best we can, we think, to develop it with what the highest and best use, maximally productive use is. So part of that analysis is legally permissible and that's zoning and that's why we're here today. So.
If it wasn't for the storage units, I'd be all over this project. I think it's great. I just can't get past those storage units. But thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
Were you saying that there is a setback, that we're changing the setback off of London Bridge Road too? Are we shortening the setback on London Bridge Road to the buildable footprint?
I'll let Chris answer that question about setbacks. I mean, the, we aren't asking for a change in the setback from what the MU is right now. We're asking for variance on that, I don't believe. We're just asking for the 25% rule and one, the proximity of sidewalks, I guess, are the two variances I think we're asking for from the current zoning.
Councilmember Campbell, that's, Mr. Still is correct on what the variances that they're asking for. Or code relief, as Mr. Gilbert had mentioned, is the 25% requirement for commercial activities on ground floor and then for the way the sidewalks, the ingress and egress with sidewalks into the establishment or into the building. Yeah. Vice Mayor Moses?
Yeah, thank you. How big is the restaurant pad?
It's a 0.7 acre parcel. We have 3,000 square feet of pad size scheduled in there, kind of just conceptually.
So I mean, we're, because we're really voting on giving you the exception of the 25% rule. What is that going to basically equate out to from a percentage standpoint?
From a, well, first just let me say like the restaurant pad and the storage aren't really affected by this. It's really just those other uses.
Right.
But we're building around 129,000 square feet altogether. So commercial uses, if you needed 25% of that, that's going to equate to about 32,500 square feet.
That's big.
Yeah.
And I'll give you my two cents on this as well. I, I, I understand the attractiveness to developers with these, with these boat storage units. And I like that you kind of hid them in the back and tiered effect. I think the layout there is going to be, will be good for the area. I like the carriage homes too. What I'm really disappointed is in that is that we're, we're losing the commercial aspect of what we originally kind of set we'd do. I think that's the bread and butter to our local economy and, and we're kind of minimizing the, the commercial aspect of it almost to the point where that little corner down there could potentially never be, never be done. And we're just kind of, you know, we come back in three years and say, hey, can we just build more boat storage units there?
I understand. It's a, it's a tough balance. And if I could, just to respond to that, I think like when you look at Victoria Farms Road and the 17 or 21 acres that got rezoned out of employment and industrial to a residential use, that was for a reason that's near and dear to a lot of people's hearts in terms of affordable type of housing. I think you're going to see another project very, very similar to this come before you guys on 17 acres out behind Home Depot. And they're basically going to ask for the same thing to rezone from a commercially probably storage units to something that's, looks a lot more like this. So it's, it's hard to pick and choose some of these things. And we really have been driven by what market participants have said they would want and purchase and invest in. So as much as I want to see the hotel component or the C store component, we just honestly weren't able to get there with a, with an investor. So the investor that we do have that owns the land then reverted to this plan and said, well, I think this is the next best thing. And that's how we landed here. But honestly, if it doesn't get approved, I mean, the only thing we have approved right now is potentially, I don't want to even say that because I don't want to sound like I'm saying be careful what you wish for because it could all be storage, but that's, that's a reality. It's owned for that right now. And again, hopefully you guys, I've been in front of you enough to know that's not me saying what I just said. I'm just, it's, I can't control the ownership all the time, right? Like I think this plan is the next best plan, but what's always feasible and it's very evident in our market is storage. Like people build it all the time. I'm not, I'm not Seinfeld and, you know, pointing out pretty clearly obvious things. But that's, we've thought about all that. So I understand your concerns and we did push for more commercial, especially hotel. It seems like a perfect place for a hotel, but we had a hard time with it. So. Is there any other questions or comments or concerns I could answer?
Okay, Councilmember Lynn?
Can you tell me again, what's in the front there on London Bridge Road? What's, what is that going to be built up? I see the carriage houses and the restaurant and the storage unit. What's there that in front?
Would like the thatched.
Chris, could you point a point to?
Yeah, what is that?
That all is just different colored stuff, but it's, those are all carriage houses.
Oh, those are carriage.
Yeah, they are. And just so you know, like butting up to London Bridge Road, there is a setback there. And we do plan to landscape that setback and create a softening of those buildings because they're nice and tall buildings, obviously. But the next row up is actually elevated quite a bit. So they do stack kind of proportionally nicely.
So this is carriage housing, this is carriage housing except for this. And how many entrances are there into this?
There's three, three entrances altogether. We originally had four entrances on London Bridge Road. And with working with the city, we narrowed that down to one and we narrowed the Industrial Boulevard entrances down to two and we pushed them as far away from the intersection as we could.
Okay. And then one other question. And I, I'm trying to visualize all this because I could be way off track here. If we decide to put in a second bridge, does this affect the traffic flow anywhere? Is this anywhere in that? Okay. Okay. Just checking, just checking. And then for the restaurant, that's the only entrance going in off of London Bridge Road is where the restaurant will be?
It is. And that, right where Chris's arrow is, if you go any further south from that, there's a pretty good dip in the road. And so it creates this kind of blind when you're pulling out of there. So we had to push what we wanted to have two entrances there, but we had to push that one. And we're trying to balance that from getting it away from the London Bridge Road and Industrial Boulevard as well, and potentially lining up directly across from what's already sitting at State Park. So we don't disturb that traffic. That's a little bit of a balancing act, but that's why we landed with that one, London Bridge Road ingress and egress.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Dolan?
A question, Mr. Gilbert. So what does this do as far, I know we're repaving and doing industrial, which I'm assuming that's hopefully is going to be done by the time this would even get started. What does that mean as far as, does that mean we have to go back and tear up the entrances and all that? Or how does this play into what we're already doing on Industrial Boulevard right now with the road construction?
Thank you, Councilmember. Engineering in our last meeting with them has already spoken about the need to coordinate the work of putting in necessary line connections before the resurfacing is done. So there'd be some coordination effort. Otherwise, there's engineering advised them of what the rules would be if the resurfacing is done first, then it gets a lot more expensive to do these kinds of things. So they're aware of what those thresholds are to north end the property on industrial.
We worked with the city today. There's three points of connection. We're trying to create sleeves for, to Chris's point. So we've been working with them constantly to try and make sure we fit into their schedule and get it in before they get completed. So.
All right. And then I guess I'll go ahead and weigh in, being a neighbor in that area. I, I would like to see more commercial. However, I mean, we do pretty well down there, but we open at six o'clock and by two o'clock, we're slow, pretty much dead, and we close at five. So there's not a lot that really goes on down there other than destination if you're going to a specific business. So, you know, I think a restaurant at the corner would, the restaurant idea is great as well, but I think then it's actually a destination you're going to that specific. I guess the idea is, you know, kind of like what Park Place might have been, where there was a section of businesses that maybe there would draw people into that area. But it's just, it is the industrial area. I mean, there are, you know, this is way better than I thought it was going to be. Like people ask me what was going over there. I'm like, well, there's a bunch of, you know, storage units and there might be some man caves above it. But, so I don't know. I, I'm not too worried about the commercial side because I don't think the commercial would really, like I said, other than I would love to see a resort like they would have in Palm Springs or something with that view and the pool and all that. But for some reason Havasu developers don't, I guess that's a hard thing to sell, but.
I know how to develop it. If you got a checkbook, we can work together.
So yeah, that's just my, my thoughts on that. So.
Good. Vice Mayor Moses?
Can I just, one more point of clarification? So he, you know, he stated that they could build boat storage units as is right now. I thought we limited boat storage units, the designation where we can put them.
And the C1 and C2, there's a, you have to get a CUP permit, but in the mixed use general, that's not, that's not a requirement. It's a permitted use.
Yes. So currently they, what we have in front of us is an item that is coming to us with a seven to zero vote from planning and zoning. The ability for them to, in the mixed use, to do storage units by right because they had, that's the current zoning, they could do that and develop this entire parcel with that or other mixed use permitted uses as well. But obviously the lowest hanging fruit is storage units. And so the way that this is laid out is where the storage units are now, there's a small alleyway and across that alleyway is a bunch of storage units. And so it makes sense from that perspective and where that developer is. But we only are really here for two items, for code relief on the 25% requirement of commercial activity on the ground floor and then the ingress and egress component. And then there's a couple of other requirements if we were to do that. So those are really the only items. Otherwise, they, you know, say this is denied tonight by council. They can go back and file for a building permit tomorrow to build storage units on that entire parcel. But with that being said, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Please just make your way to the podium. State your name for the record.
My name's Emilio Torres and I'm a resident. The idea of the rezoning, sounds good to me. What troubles me is the idea of going into a zoning and immediately asking for variance, particularly when the petitioner's stating that nothing's final. The other thing I didn't see, and it's very important, I think was intentionally omitted, is the view from London Bridge Road. From London Bridge Road, they're going to look like storage containers, storage. You've got, you've got a storage, storage on the bottom with housing on the top. From the street, it's going to look like storage, maybe with a few windows. So I think I would like to see the view from London Bridge Road. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. Mr. Gilbert, could you advance one slide so we can get the picture of what the carriage homes look like? Yeah. So there's a mixture, Emilio, of stucco. It looks like possibly some sort of fabrication otherwise. But, and then as the applicant had mentioned, it would, because of the topography of that land, it'll cascade as it makes its way up industrial. So hopefully that either alleviates your concern or at least answers your question.
Could we go back to the overall plot plan? Thank you. On Industrial Boulevard, which goes down, that goes into the entrance to this park, correct? You have Campbell's boat across the street. Want to go back? I'm thinking about the traffic in the morning with people coming down Industrial Boulevard with their boat going into the park to go, launch their boats and people trying to make a left-hand turn to go into the unit. And then the other one on the, where the storage units are, I thought we weren't going to do that anymore. But anyhow, seemed like that's a lot of traffic. People coming in, in their garage or their storage units, get their boat out. And if they go north, can they make a left-hand turn on to industrial? Or do they have to make a right-hand turn? That's confusing to me. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Mr. Wisdom, that is a divided roadway. So they would only be able to make a right-hand turn out of, out of that area. Going, yes. With, with the current configuration, of course, there's a traffic study that's underway right now as the applicant had mentioned and Mr. Gilbert alluded to. And so based on the results of that, those, those concerns would be addressed.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Toy. I, one, I'd just like to say I'm really disappointed in the developer threatening you as a council and as a citizen. I just didn't feel that it was right that he sat here and developed, threatened you literally, like, oh, if you don't agree to the apartments, then I'm going to build storage units. Um, I was, the Lake Havasu City is supposed to be working on becoming more pedestrian friendly. And I thought that was the reason why you had the codes added into the general plan so that people would find apartment complexes and things like that a little more pedestrian friendly. And I noticed that this last year, you guys added a bike lane on London Bridge Road. It appears to me that somehow this whole development with carriage houses that sounds like that are, according to him, not going to be very affordable, are going to be affecting the bike lane and all of that. I just don't, anyway, I'm not the one who has to vote for that. Really grateful for that. But my question is, is our city supposed to be becoming more pedestrian friendly? And is that why you added that code? That, isn't that the code he's trying to have taken off?
Yeah, no, I think there might be a little bit of confusion there. One, the bike lane won't be impacted at all because all the buildings are happening on their private land with the appropriate setbacks that are there. So that, that won't be a consideration. But the ingress, egress, Mr. Gilbert, that section of the code is about getting into the unit, correct?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, the, there will be sidewalk installed as part of the project. There will be very likely additional lanes put in for turn lanes. They are going to have to dedicate additional right-of-way to the city. So you'll be seeing this again for that dedication, whether it's through plat or another means. So there will be, there will be additional accommodation for pedestrian activities.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, my name is Dan Roddy. I'm the park manager at Lake Havasu State Park. I'm here on behalf of the Arizona State Parks and Trails. And Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you very much for your time this evening. One of the things I'd like to start with is the fact that we're very appreciative of the city efforts in this project. When it first came out back in 2021, we had conversations with the city as well as the developers, expressed our concerns over the locations, the drives going in and out of the property. So some of those changes that you see here today are direct responses and the responsiveness of the people looking to develop this, this project. And we're very grateful for that. We appreciate it and we're of strong opinion that that will continue. The reason I'm here today is to consistently bring up the concerns that we brought in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And that has to do with the anticipated traffic and potential changes there. We're greatly looking forward to the results of the traffic survey that they've already undertaken. Very happy to hear that. But we'd remind everybody that the Lake Havasu State Park attracts a half million visitors a year. Approximately 400,000 of those visitors come to the property from the intersection of London Bridge Road and Industrial Boulevard. Right now, we're waiting in, you know, eager anticipation to see how the new bike lane is going to impact that flow of traffic. That bike lane is going to start impacting us today because if you're going northbound on London Bridge Road to go eastbound on Industrial Boulevard, you have to cut off the bike lane. So again, we're looking forward to the proposals for how the traffic is going to be handled, what impacts it will have, and what changes are going to be required to make sure that that free flowing and safe traffic is going to continue. That's a very big concern of ours. But we are looking forward to working with everybody to find those solutions. We are very thrilled about having new neighbors. We love the development. We think it's going to be a great addition to our community. So we want to be supportive, but we do have those concerns. Along those same lines, when you bring residential into a commercial area, which again, we support the idea of bringing residential into our neighborhood, but we do want to make sure that everybody understands it's kind of like buying. everybody understands, it's kinda like buying a house next to the airport. It's a very busy property, it's noisy, there's traffic, there's traffic at five in the morning, there's traffic at 10 o'clock at night. There's times of years it's rather quiet, but we just want to be here to consistently point out for the record that these are some of the things that may come up in the future. In 10 years from now, when somebody says, hey, I've got an issue with the amount of traffic in my neighborhood, we were here first since 1965. So those are things that we wanna make sure we're consistent with reflecting on the record. Again, as we go on to all these other conversations of what we're having, we are very grateful for the people involved, we're very grateful for the opportunity to come here and discuss it in front of you, and the fact that every time we've asked for something or raised a question, it's been handled professionally, it's given consideration, and we try to find the best possible solution. So with that, again, I appreciate you listening to our concerns, we very much support this project, we, we believe it's gonna be a great addition to the economic development and ongoing tax base in our community, and we support that. I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has them.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Roddy. Are there any questions for Mr. Roddy from members of the council? No? And you have been very consistent, you've been at every public hearing for planning and zoning to counsel on this development, and we appreciate the feedback from the neighborhood. You're, you're a vital partner of, of Lake Havasu City, and so your input matters, and we appreciate you sharing that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Again, we have this zoning use in front of us that is coming to us with a recommendation in favor from seven to zero from planning and zoning commission. It is looking for code relief on two code sections that Mr. Gilbert reviewed to make this project work with our code. Are there any additional questions or comments, members of council?
I, I have one more clarification on the, because we're talking about the 25%. So they're asking on a variance of the 25%, so they could technically do zero once we give them this variance, is that correct?
Yes, on the ground floor.
Um, I mean, yeah, zero.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but as the suggested motion is written, is that they would comply with the kind of the development plan that we reviewed tonight, so if they wanted to not have a restaurant site, the, the staff would have something to say about that. But by zoning, they could do that and do something different.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
Motion?
Please.
I move to adopt the suggested action.
Is that suitable, Ms. Gary?
I have to read all of that. I move to adopt ordinance 24-1325 approving a planned development rezoning of 700 London Bridge Road from mixed-use general district MUG to mixed-use general plan development district MU-G-PD, and approving a, a general development plan for the property with the following conditions. One, city code section 14 dot 02 dot 04 dot B dot 4 dot B shall not be applicable to this project. Two, city code section 14 dot 03 dot 03 dot A dot 5 shall not be applicable to this project. Three, all requirements of the Lake Havasu City Public Works Department and utility providers regarding the proposed project depicted on the general development plan shall be satisfied during the design review process. Four, the development conducted on the site shall be in substantial compliance with the general development plan at all times. Minor changes necessary to meet utility company, ADOT, or city public works engineering requirements shall be considered as, shall not be considered as substantial changes.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember Campbell. Any additional comments or questions? All right, we are ready to vote.
Motion carries five to one.
Thank you. All right, item 7.4 is a introduce ordinance number 24-1324 amending Lake Havasu City Code Title 13 subdivisions, including but not limited, limited to allowing administrative approval of preliminary and final plats, revise subdivision definition, and revising public improvement assurances. Mr. Gilbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me advance this one slide before I go over the recap, I do wanna make this statement here. Arizona Senate Bill 1103, which is attached to your communication, was signed into law by the governor on March 3rd, 2023. This bill permits Arizona municipalities to administratively manage the entire plat approval process, including preliminary and final plats, in accordance with already established guidelines in Title 13 of the, of the Lake Havasu City City Code. I'm gonna go over the recap, the proposed amendments. Again, Arizona Bill 1103 now permits that. Plats that meet all codified city standards have little space to be denied at present, and the state now recognizes that the action taken on plats by the Planning Commission City Council is administrative and not legislative. Number two, this change will save developers a lot of time going through two separate platting hearing processes for both the Planning Commission at the preliminary stage and the city council at the final stage. Number three, the subdivision definition will be synchronized to, throughout the document to set four parcels as the maximum limit for a minor division of land not to be considered a plat. In other words, if, if there's five parcels, it's a plat automatically, there's no, there's no minor division that can be an option. And finally, number four, the unconditional guarantee option for public improvement installation from a local bank or federally insured savings and loan, or other financial institutions approved by the city, is unclear and not a common method of assurance provided by financial institutions, and therefore is proposed to be deleted as one of acceptable methods. So that's kind of separate from the Senate Bill 1103, but it's a significant change that we want to include here in this bundle of changes. There are a lot in the codified track changes, there are a lot of line-outs ready, a lot of that is just to do the proper re, technical rewording to accomplish what Senate Bill 1103 allows us to do. That's why it looks so extensive. Mr. Mayor, that's really all there is to that, we're just trying to forward something to the council or the mayor for consideration that the state law now permits us to do.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, there's a variety of housing bills that have been introduced at the legislature during the last legislative session and this legislative session. Most of them are not good for, for cities, giving folks at-right zoning, meaning they can do whatever they want, irregardless of our general plan or our zoning laws. But this, the idea through all of this, or kind of the, the fabric that is, is going through, or the thread that's going through all of these fabrics is to speed up the process to build housing, and hopefully that somehow will solve some of the housing challenges across the state. This one, as Mr. Gilbert had mentioned, will speed up the process, so that there's, we have explained many times when we've had final plats in front of us, that it's literally just property lines on, on the map that we're approving, and, and there, there isn't a lot of ability by, by state laws for us to do anything other than approve it. So this would create a, a process that would allow us to speed up. Obviously, when the team looked at this code section, they were able to identify a couple of other changes that could be in there, and one of them are the assurances. So there still are several, well, there's four other ways of assurances that are still going to be in code to ensure that any of the improvements that are required by the city are taken care of. So cash, obviously, being one of them, an escrow account, a performance bond, and then construction of the improvements prior to the final plating, recording, just getting rid of, of this one that really is not giving us the assurances that we need to make sure that the, the infrastructure's built. Are there any questions from Mr. Gilbert before we open the public hearing? No? All right, this is a public hearing, would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for any discussion or questions or possible motion?
Mayor motion?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I move to introduce ordinance number 24-1324 amending Lake Havasu City Code Title 13 subdivisions.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Vice Mayor Moses, is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Item 7.5 is approve the cooperative purchase agreement for playground equipment and safety servicing with Ex Supply Inc. Mr. Keen?
Yeah, to, on tonight's agenda, it will be some replacement of the playground and safety surface at Jack Hardy Park. Just kind of a city map of where Jack Hardy Park is, it is a little bit of a hidden gem in a neighborhood, it's really right across the street from us between Akoma and Daytona, off of Bunker and Baron. So what we're looking to do is replace the safety surface and the playground that is at Jack Hardy Park, it was initially installed in 2008. We will be doing the demolition ourselves, just to save a little bit of financial from, from the contract itself. As we disassemble the, the playground, it is still in pretty good shape, so we are going to take it out to the island football field and have a, a play structure there for any siblings that might not be participating in practice or in the games, we'll create another playground out, out in that, that space. So this is the playground that we are intending to replace the Jack Hardy Park playground with, and this is a, a kind of a back view of that same playground. And pretty straightforward, we'll just remove the one that is there, replace it with this, replace the soft play surface, and take the, the current one out to the island ballfield. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Yeah, Mr. Keen, if you could talk about the soft play surface, which is very expensive and not always noticed, so if you could just explain a little bit about that.
Certainly, the soft play surface is, is really, does what it, what it says, it, it's soft, so that when the kid does maybe come down the slide a little too quick and goes tumbling, that, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna fall on something very soft. It also allows strollers and wheelchairs to be rolled across for access in those regards versus some of our other surface treatments where we'll use either wood fiber or the rubber chips, they're a little bit more difficult to maneuver on. So that soft play surface is very expensive, we looked at just replacing the soft play surface here on this one site with removal and the replacement, that was $107,000 by itself. So definitely a very expensive product, but it is, again, the most user-friendly.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and in one of your first pictures, you can see it coming up in what we currently have.
You can see it.
Left-hand photos there. But we have a similar treatment that was done at Rotary Park, and it turned out fantastic, and it looks great, and is doing its job when little ones fall, so.
Yes, it does.
Yes. Any questions or comments, members of the council, from Mr. Keen? Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
Is there any type of warranty on the play surface?
Yes, I believe there's a five-year warranty on that surface.
And we use, Mr. Mayor said that we already have some of this already in Rotary?
Yes, at Ramada B is, is another area that we just replaced that soft play surface.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember, or Councilmember Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So is some of the money we're using with this, the extra money we put into the budget for Parks and Rec?
Yes, that is correct.
Excellent, thank you for that. And then I just wanna say, appreciate the fact that you're putting more money and, and time into this park, as well as we heard in the city manager's report, a couple of our service clubs with the Lions Club and the Kiwanis are also upgrading that park, and it is a gem in the middle of town that tourists don't use, our local children use it, especially our, our scouting groups, the Girl Scouts meet there quite often during the summer, as do the Boy Scouts. So the fact that you guys are upgrading that park, working with the service clubs is great. Thank you.
And to Mr. Lane's comment, the budget, this is your budget at work, so we invested an additional $500,000 in the Parks and Recreation budget for park improvements, and this is just one example of, of how that money's being used, so thank you for pointing that out. Any additional comments, yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
I just wanna say I really enjoy the balloon fest theme to it, I think that's very cute, that'll look great right in the middle of that community, thank you.
Councilmember Dolan?
Yeah, as a balloon expert, that's quite an ugly balloon, I just wanna point that out. Maybe we could go like all black? Maybe a little color?
We'll try to make it match your balloon?
Yeah, well, I mean, if you want to. I'd be honored, but, yeah, maybe a little bit brighter might brighten everybody's day a little bit more, but it looks nice.
All right, any other comments from members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing, would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Please just make way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Hi, Bonnie Toy. There, there's no shade over the playground. Was there gonna be shade, because like over at the Rotary Park one has a huge shade covering over, and man, is that so fun to play on? Yeah, my grandson loves it.
There isn't shade on, on this particular, the balloon will give some shade. There's also around this playground, there are a lot of trees already, so the shade structure may not be needed. If it is needed in a later date, we would be able to install that.
Yeah, yeah, Jack Hardy Park is, is, as you mentioned, a hidden gem, it's, it's very shaded and, yeah, it offers a lot of breaks from the sun, so.
Won't the, if you shade that stuff, won't it last longer?
In, in direct sunlight, certainly. With the way the trees are situated, we do believe it will shade most of this.
Okay.
Would anyone else like to address the council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Lane?
Yeah, two things, one, I'll point out, as the city manager had in his report, the Lions Club just spent a lot of money putting a shade structure, so there is no place to get out in the shade, and the playground is under a lot of trees, there's a lot of trees there. So with that, I'll make a motion. I move to approve the cooperative purchase agreement in the amount of $131,734.60 for playground equipment and safety service with Ex Supply Inc., and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement and authorize city staff to exercise the option to renew for three additional one-year terms.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane, a second from Councilmember Dolan, is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is item 7.6, approve sole source purchase of Badger water meters from Badger Meter. Mr. Foggan?
Mayor, council, good evening, wonderful to be here with you tonight. It is time for our annual purchase of water meters, and this is budgeted, and we generally do this when we're running low on meters, and as it turns out, we are low on meters, so it is time to make the purchase for meters, and that's really all I have. We are, but, we do Badger meters here in Havasu, and this is just continuing that tradition.
Excellent, thank you. Are there any questions from members of the council, from Mr. Foggan? All right, this is a public hearing, would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for any questions or motion?
Mayor?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Moses?
Yeah, thank you. I move to approve the sole source purchase of Badger water meters from Badger Meter for the inventory stock in the amount of $93,380, and for a not-to-exceed amount of $150,000 for any additional unforeseen purchases through the end of the fiscal year 2023, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Moses, a second from Councilmember Dolan. The, the motion might have sounded a little strange, so we're, we're doing two things here, we're approving the purchase of the, the meters, but this is a vendor of ours, so if we need to purchase anything else from the vendor throughout the rest of the fiscal year, we're allowing that additional amount up to $150,000 based on other components that are in different line items of the budget. So anything over $50,000 from one vendor has to come before city council, so we're just giving that authorization, knowing that we took a big chunk of that authorization to make this, this annual purchase. Any additional comments or questions before we vote?
Any additional comments or questions before we vote? All right, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Item seven point seven is an airport update. Mr. Kane?
There he is. Good evening. Sorry. Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Rob Kane and your new airport manager. So this is the first of probably several airport updates that I'll give you over time. First, I'd like to thank you all. A big thank you to the city for giving me a chance to serve again and to do it in such a welcoming community. Despite some of the family challenges that we've been facing in the extended transition, we're very much enjoying Lake Havasu City and getting to know the community. So thank you. From what I've seen in the past four months, the city has a very capable airport facility that represents the city well. As you all know, the airport is essentially the first thing you see as you're coming down 95 from the north. And a well-maintained and clean facility such as your airport can be a real asset, important asset to the community. I'm very proud of the airport team. They have great respect for the airport and care very much for how it's maintained and operated safely, efficiently, and in accordance with standards. I've still got a lot to learn, but I'm happy to be part of the city team. As an agenda, I'd like to talk about safe daily operations as the most important thing we do, improvements and accomplishments, and some future planning and goals for the airport, myself and the team.
Yeah, Mr. Kane, could you talk a little bit further into the mic?
Okay, is that good?
Yes.
Loud enough? Sorry. Safe daily operations of the airport and aircraft is foremost in our minds every day. We will continue to stress this throughout the airport community of interest as represented by these pictures showing a wide variety of aircraft operating in and around our airport, including increasing numbers of high-performance and complex military aircraft. We can't afford to let our guard down at all. Operationally, this is kind of interesting. It looks like this past weekend was the busiest weekend ever in terms of airport, of the airport hosting significant numbers of larger jet aircraft transiting in support of Super Bowl attendees. 60 aircraft of this type over the four days was quite significant. I was out on the field over the weekend observing operations. The whole team, including the FBOs, were very professional and did a great job supporting the arriving, parking, loading, unloading, and servicing of the aircraft through departure. It was very safe and efficient. Overall, I think this weekend's activity provided great visibility for our airport. In terms of recent improvements and accomplishments, I've already touched on safe and sustainable operations. The major reconstruction of the runway with the help of the FAA in Arizona last summer was obviously a very big deal for the airport. And along with the taxiway and safety area improvements in previous years, most of the aircraft movement areas have been modernized. We also continue to work on in-house pavement maintenance projects such as the one shown in the middle picture around the city-owned hangars and around the self-serve fuel station this year. Being good stewards of the environment in coordination with the ADEQ in city, unused past end-of-life underground fuel tanks were removed. That's picture on the right. And in the spring, the city solicited RFPs for development of the south end of the airport. We are in discussions with Havasu Air Center, the selected proposal, on an agreement for moving forward with development. As I believe you are all aware, additional hangar capacity continues to be a priority for the airport community of interest. In terms of good governance, we are working to integrate into our planning and analysis a data mapping capability to track airfield activity. We've had this capability for about a year, and this will help correlate our actual operations with projections in the airport master plan for future development planning. As your new airport manager, I'm happy to be here and proud to serve. We recently updated an outdated date agreement with the Avis Budget Group. When we looked at this, we felt it was important to modernize the agreement because it was significantly outdated. But more importantly, we moved their car preparation area from an area inside the fence on the flight line, and now it's going to be outside. We viewed this, it was exposed to a lot of aircraft operations, particularly military aircraft operations, and they just didn't need to be out there anymore. So bottom line, we corrected what we considered to be a safety and security issue out there at the airport. Next, going forward, we will continue to plan for safe and sustainable infrastructure maintenance and development that is consistent with the 2020 master plan. Some upcoming projects are listed on the slide. Removing safety issues such as recessing the hydrant system in the runway safety area, mitigating erosion and foreign object damage potential with the runway safety area improvements, upgrading runway lighting and marking systems to complete the runway reconstruction or complement the runway reconstruction and continued pavement maintenance. Continued planning for the south end development is important and will continue to be a priority because of the location and the utility of Taxiway Charlie. That would be on the lower right picture, the red, and its relationship to the south end development that will determine the FAA's interest in supporting that reconstruction effort. For governance, many of the airport leases in agreement stay back to the early 90s with many addendums and changes. As I continue my study, I need to better understand these agreements and their relationship to each other and the requirements that are outlined in them. This is important for planning, budget, and compliance issues. Also, as the leases approach expiration, I think we need to understand how to best modernize the leases in terms of overall airport sustainability. Another priority for me is to increase productive and valued engagement with the airport community of interest. This would include having some work to do with the advisory board, which I think, as you know, hasn't met in about a year and a half. Finally, I'm very interested in better understanding the overall budget process and ensuring that the airport is on a sustainable path from a fiscal perspective. Mayor and council members, that concludes my presentation, and I'll take any questions.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Kane. Yeah, the airport, unless you are a general aviation user or someone that regularly uses the airport, you might not think that you use the airport, but you do if you shop on Amazon or if you get medical services within our community or you get mail service. You use the airport, and it's a large economic driver. And one of the best benefits is about 90% of the airport is funded through grants through the FAA or ADOT or other things. And so it allows us to drive the economic development for our community, ensure that our citizens have access to quick services. Some people are really surprised when they learn that there's medical offices that literally fly in every day, where they bring their doctors or care providers as well as other office staff and supply medical services to people within our community. Certainly organ donation and life flights and all of those things as well. As Mr. Kane had mentioned, I had the opportunity to tour the airport this weekend to take a look at all of the aircraft that were out at the airport for Super Bowl. And what they were doing is they, in Las Vegas, they ran out of airport space to have all of the jets for the performers and the people that can afford that kind of a lifestyle. And what they would do is they would then helicopter them from here into Vegas to do whatever it is they were doing there. Some drove, so I guess you could tell the rank of who was who. But an amazing operation to see all of that aircraft and how our partners at the FBO were working with your team, Mr. Kane, and making all of those things happen. And the exposure that you get from that type of stuff is amazing for future economic development. But we appreciate everything that's happening at the airport. Lots of great things are occurring for the users and the regular, everyday users as well as those that don't even know they use the facilities. And welcome to Lake Havasu, we're glad to have you here.
Thanks, Mayor, thanks, council.
Are there any other questions? Councilmember Lynn, this was your requested item. I don't know if you have any additional questions or specific questions.
Nope, I just wanted to meet you and give some updates out there. Thank you.
Excellent. All right, are there any other comments or questions from members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to join in the conversation? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing. All right, thank you very much. All right, and then our final public hearing this evening is item seven point eight, discussion and direction to planning staff regarding possible added design standards to metallic exterior materials on commercial buildings. Before I turn it over to Mr. Gilbert, we kind of are seeing our code section in action right now with these last two items. So there are several ways that a member of council can get something on the agenda. They can ask for it in the future agenda items section of the meeting and get two other council members to agree to have that discussion in the future. That's what Councilmember Lynn did for our previous discussion and was able to get that on the agenda. Or you could work through my office, and we can look at whatever the topic might be and have a discussion. And that's what this next item is going to be. So Councilmember Campbell had wanted to take a look at this. We had a discussion, her and I, and then we also had a discussion with our team at the city and referred this item over to the Planning and Zoning Commission that also heard this item, now bringing it back to us for a decision or a direction of some sort. So with that, Mr. Gilbert, if you wanted to make your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is a discussion on the consideration of some level of metallic exterior materials on commercial buildings. Previous regimes with the city handling the approval of exterior materials on buildings as everyone has seen around town in our commercial districts. We have metal buildings and we have siding on them. And what's interesting is what our current development code says is, with the exception of the categories listed here in subsection one of applicability, there is a requirement under number two for materials to be high-quality adobe brick, stone, or cementitious materials durable under desert climate conditions. So the situation we're facing now is we have a code that says one thing, and we have a history in the community of allowing certain levels of metal structures, metallic corrugated metallic structures, exteriors, that have created a situation where when we ask a developer to, when they're constructing their structure, to use a material and color that's compatible with the area, sometimes we run into issues where you got metal buildings next door. And so we're presenting this to the council to help us clarify, give us direction back as to what it is you guys would like to see going forward. So, by you guys, I meant the whole council. So let me forward this to the various photos or options, and none of these are in Havasu, so we're not embarrassing anybody here. The first option is the full metal building, which we've all seen in industrial areas. And that's our point, in our industrial zones, metal buildings are permitted, no problem. It's, we're talking about purely the commercial zones. So we got the full metal building, which we've all seen before, and it's not very attractive, very basic rectangle essentially here in figure one. Then there's a second option, which when you look at this, at example, second example here, figure two, it looks like a non-metallic structure, but it's actually got a lot of metal in it. It's just very expensively architecturally designed. So this is a very, very nice option to consider, but it's very costly as well. The third option is one where you have a ground floor level that meets the previous section that I read, which is cementitious, stone, brick, stucco. For the ground floor and then for the parapet wall above the ground floor, you have the corrugated metal. So that's a third style, calling it figure three. And then finally, this one, which is common nationwide, everywhere, but one of the not necessarily most attractive structures is figure four, and that is where you have the wainscoting that's under the windows. In this particular case, the wainscoting is not very high because the windows are very large and long from top to bottom. But they can be as much as a third of a building, sometimes half even, depending on the size of windows, being a brick, stone, stucco, wainscote. So essentially, what we're asking is if the council could, let me go back, look at these and options here and decide if you want to make any changes or if you want to allow staff to come back with code changes that would allow some degree of corrugated metallic inclusion in exterior facades in our commercial zones. The overhead to have up right now has five options that we would like the council to consider and decide which one you guys would like to direct us to come back with, if any. The cost of development keeps going up significantly every year, and by allowing some form of this might allow a higher level of commercial development citywide if the costs of development weren't as high as they are using some of the more traditional materials of brick, stone, stucco. So, Mr. Mayor, that completes my presentation on this, and I open up to you and the council for discussion.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Yeah, just on this slide that you have up here, the Planning and Zoning Commission did hear the item, and their recommendation, or their only recommendation was to eliminate the reference to adobe brick and stone section and the section for materials to allow a less specific menu of siding materials and to provide additional flexibility for new materials to be considered by the zoning administrator. Mr. Gilbert, do you want to elaborate a little bit on that discussion just so we have that on the table for the council's consideration?
Oh, certainly, Mr. Mayor. The planning commission did not select an option to recommend to the city council, but they did want to strike that. Let me go back here because this is very germane to the discussion. They did want a consideration to take that first line of item two on this slide where it says, "Materials using constructed finished structures shall be high-quality adobe brick, stone, and cementitious materials." And instead, just leave it be of high-quality materials durable under desert and climate conditions. That's their recommendation while at the same time not selecting a specific level of use of corrugated metal.
Excellent, yeah, thank you. Yeah, Councilmember Campbell, this was your item. So I don't know if you have any specific questions, comments, or thoughts about the direction of where we take the conversation?
I do, and first I want to thank the staff and the planning and zoning for taking the time to look at this. My big concern is, as I read the original code over and over again, and this has nothing to do with the nomadic, has nothing to do with the project themselves. It was the conversation based on code. When I started getting questions, how did they build an all-metal building in a retail commercial area like Main Street? Part of the code, the original code that we have, says that you should be, it should look similar to surrounding areas. And at that time, I know when I was on the PED, I was presenting Sanchez Jewelers, and my concern that these don't look anything alike. So in the meantime, there is so much in our code, that's right. But I don't know how that building got there looking like that, number one. And number two, my big concern moving forward is now we've set a precedence moving forward that anybody on McCullough can, if they do a remodel, can just make it a corrugated metal building all over. I have a problem too, because I remember, I don't know if it was prior to the 2016 general plan, but we had a policy in place, and you can see it when you come into the south side of Havasu, you'll start to see storage units, they actually have stucco on them, and they have a pretty facade. They usually have some sidewalks, some grass. It looks nice. Somewhere along the line, we just allowed storage units to be all corrugated metal. the line, we just allowed storage units to be all corrugated metal. And then as you come in on the north side, which so many people complain about, oh, all those ugly storage units, well, we also have ugly hangers too. So yes, this does add extra costs to the developers, but we all know that the reason why everybody's building storage units is because it's mailbox money and they're very successful. So I'm not trying to get into the developers' pockets. What I'd like to see is us to go back to beautifying our city and making contractors and developers a little more accountable for what it looks like when they come in and out of Lake Havasu. Anybody that knows me knows that I do not really care about storage units. I think that they're very successful. They don't use services. They have an industry within an industry, which is all boats, cars, motorcycles, and all the fun things, and you don't want those all in your front yard. I guarantee you that. So storage units are not a problem with me. What I don't like is the way they look. And I hope that we haven't lost it, because we've built so many of them that are just inexpensive corrugated metal, and it makes our city look ugly. So as I look at the new updates, plus the notes from the planning and zoning, I would like to make an emphasis moving forward. I don't know how the nomadic happened, other than a lot of our codes at the bottom say it's under the jurisdiction of the staff. I have a problem with that statement a little too. But anyways, what we have in front of us, I would probably move to direct planning and zoning to consider, like permit number five, which says, hey, we want all these to look somewhat between two, you know, three and four. Is that right? Yeah, five. So those figures make sense to me. I see these designs all the time. I don't think we're asking a lot of our developers to come to the table and put a better look to our overall community. That's all I want. And let's see. The other thing that I would like to push the envelope, and maybe you'd have to go back and consider, under the direction of the mayor and the council, if they agree with me, would be, I would like to consider commercial and light industrial to have to be held responsible for the same standards we used to be held responsible years ago. You can come look at my building right now. The whole front of it is stucco. Around the corners of it is all corrugated metal, but you don't see it from the street. And according to the code, it did say that, but not in commercial now. So as a whole, for metal buildings, to make our city more beautiful to the eye, I would like to see some of these facades put into place. Did I make any sense there? Do you guys understand my direction? And how do you feel about it, is what I'd like to know?
Yeah, so what, basically, some of the comments that you made, I get what you're saying, but they don't go together. So if you're going to do, if you're looking at permitting a specific combination of styles depicted in figures two through four, those, that would be the code section that we would change to allow that. That's not going to require stucco, an entire stucco facade on the front side of a building, because they would use a combination, as long as you understand that component.
Excuse me, Mayor. I understand what you're saying, but what I was saying in the more industrial area, if they didn't want to do it all the way around, they just did it in the front, where the street side came in, just an improved facade, like you would see on some of these, that's what I'm saying. Take that number two, three, and four for all commercial zoned areas where there's retail and, you know, that commercial entity. But when we get into industrial or light industrial, if they could just do the front facade, street frontage of it, and again, when you get into industrial areas, it can be, I always call it the Wild, Wild West back there, but, so I'm not too worried about that. But I do, and we are built out as a community, so I might be missing the boat here, but I just am not going to sit back and watch the next permit being pulled on McCulloch to build a brand-new bar or restaurant, be another corrugated metal building only. I'm concerned about that. And I know the constituents have come to me in droves and told me they're very disappointed in it, thus why I'm bringing it here today. And I do appreciate you taking it to the discussion for me here. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Yes, so currently, the discussion in front of us now is commercial zoned areas. So industrial would allow figure one, and does. I mean, that's what almost all our industrial areas now currently have. I have it on commander today, so I have a familiar experience with all of those that are pretty much figure one, at least in that area. But is that the case, Mr. Gilbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have the slide up. It's under applicability. It's A1. If you look down to items I and J, these are exempt. There's heavy commercial services located in the LI and I districts and industrial located in LI and I. So those right now are exempt, but that could be changed with what we bring back to make them subject to the building design requirements.
Okay.
And that is my request moving forward, because our industrial area is in a very desirable part of our community. And as you're driving through it to get to the state park or past these new housing, past Campbell Cove, it would be nice down industrial to have those facades look better. I will admit that on the corner of industrial and Kiwa, I believe it is, they built KH, what is that, KH, a new, a new commercial building. They did it all in metal. It was blue and gray. They did a nice job, but I would like to never have these all corrugated ugly buildings facing any Main Street moving forward, like it used to be.
All right. Are there any other comments or questions from members of council? Councilmember Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess beauty's in the eye of the beholder. Some people like the building that you mentioned. I'm not going to mention particular businesses, but when you drive up and down our commercial areas, you see some buildings that are all metal and done very stylish. You see some that are partial wood, some and metal, some are brick and some are metal. And then when you get into, as we said, the industrial areas, you'll see all metal. The commercial areas out at the airport, they're all metal, just like that right there. So everything that we have in town, you already see this. I actually like what the planning and zoning came up with. Take out those things and say they have to be, if you want to go back to that slide, I can read it for you, the other way. It's the other way. Isn't it? Go back.
That one?
Excuse me?
This slide?
No, it's at the front of your presentation.
It's the very first slide you had up there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, wrong way.
There you go.
That one.
I know, I advanced one slide.
One, two, and there you go, right here. Where what they said was, take out the words adobe brick, stone, cementitious material, and make it materials used in construction and finishing a structure shall be of high quality, durable under desert climate conditions that display a similar level of quality and architectural interest as materials used in the design of other structures adjacent to the proposed structure. That's what planning and zoning came up with. I sat and listened to their meeting. I think what they came up with was a great idea, and I would go with that. You already see these buildings, and styles change over time. So what may have been popular today is not going to be popular tomorrow. And what's popular tomorrow wasn't popular 30 years ago. So I think we have to have room for change, and I think that allows that. And I think that what one person considers to be unattractive, somebody else considers to be attractive. So I think as long as we're making sure that it's high quality and durable under the right conditions, what they're doing now with approving the plans, I think is great. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, councilmember Lane. Councilmember Campbell, let's see, if we could hear from other members of the council, and then we'll, we can engage in those conversations. Are there any other comments from members of council?
Mr. Mayor, I agree with councilmember Lane. You know, I'd be willing to go with what planning and zoning had recommended, you know, that change in materials. Like I said, I think beauty is in the eye of the beholder. I don't think the nomadic building, it wouldn't be necessarily my style, but I haven't had anybody complain to me specifically, but just looking at pictures on my phone, just to kind of remember exactly what it looked, I think it does have that architectural design to it, maybe, is what they were. I guess my concern too is, where does that level, what's the litmus test on that? Does staff look at that and say, yeah, that met the architectural requires, so they were okay with it? Or, because like I said, it does look like it is mainly, it has the architectural design to it, but maybe it doesn't incorporate some of the other items that would then be included in number two. So like I said, that would be my concern in the future, is that to make sure that we are including those, and it's not just a architecturally-designed steel building, but it is incorporating those other materials as, like I said, like number two, maybe not that extreme, but to where it's incorporating some of that and not just a steel building. So just my thoughts.
Thank you. Councilmember Lane?
Councilmember Dolan, then wouldn't that be the option number five? What you were saying? The combination of styles isn't...
Can you pull up number five for us, just so we can see what we're...
Mr. Gilbert, if you could advance the slide.
Sorry, I have it written for me.
Yeah.
Can you go to this page where it has the options? Isn't that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Because I do understand, I do understand what councilmember Lane is saying, but I do see where council, councilmember Campbell is talking about, that we can't have that list, that picture of all those, that metal one. We can't have, we can't have those all over town in commercial. We can't. So I think that kind of gives us what planning and zoning is stating, and gives us a little bit of wiggle room there by using that option five.
And I actually agree with your point, councilmember Lynn, and councilmember Dolan, is I think option five, the combination of styles depicted in figures two through four, achieves all of the goals that we're talking about when it comes to these structures, but it also gives very specific code language to the team. There's misunderstandings that these buildings were built outside of code, or they're not, they weren't permitted correctly. That's not true. They met all codes. So they followed the code that was written, and they had, it, basically, the language, and I'm paraphrasing, is that it has to be of materials that are supported by the other neighborhood businesses, but that, again, is discretionary, where someone says that, you know, it does match or give the same flavor of that community. There was a person that came to our planning and zoning commission during this hearing and talked about, you know, what if, or it actually was a commissioner that had mentioned it, saying, you know, what if I'm on a section of roadway that I'm the first building to go, and I want to put some sort of a metal-enhanced building of some sort, where I not be allowed to, because the nearest building next to me is a block down the road, and it's of stucco, which is a good point. So I think by doing option five, it takes into account the conversation planning and zoning had. It gives, it's very specific for code language for the staff, so that when they're going through, and then also gives certainty to people that want to build buildings. I mean, these are, these are investments that people are making in property and/or businesses and/or entities that are happening, and certainly certainty gives them a lot more momentum to move forward than an uncertain environment. Any other, any other comments or questions before we open up the public hearing? Councilmember Campbell?
Mayor, I agree with you. Out of all those, I do like number five. It does at least give you a guideline for the staff and the contractor coming in. I do agree with David Lane that things do change, but as a designer, it could be stucco and what the stucco looks like today versus what it looked like 30 years ago. The stucco looks completely different. So as a designer, all these materials, as long back as I remember, we've had brick, stucco, wood, you know, they've all been part of our design metals. We've used them as long as I've been alive or doing these projects. So I believe that you can continue to modernize. We're not telling somebody you're in a box and you have to just design the same exact cookie cutter, like HOA-style home. We're not talking about that. I'm just saying, I have a strong, I don't really understand how we got an all corrugated metal building in downtown McCulloch when you have Sanchez Jewelers right in front of it. Something happened there. I don't know what it is. It's behind us now. I just don't want, moving forward, everybody on McCulloch having, me personally, I don't want all of McCulloch to look like corrugated metal buildings, like an industrial. That's me personally. But, all right, thank you. I appreciate the conversation.
All right. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item?
Yeah, David Diaz, I'm actually the chair of the planning and zoning commission, and I believe option five does really hit the spirit of what we were talking about at our planning and zoning meeting. And can you go back to the first, I guess, option one, or, oh, keep going, keep going, keep going. That one. That's what we don't want. And we talked about that. We don't want that. And then somebody even brought up storage containers, you know, they're building with those. And we said, no, we don't want, we want, we want those other things where they look more, you know, with the pop-outs and the wainscoting and the different architectural designs is what we want to have. So that's the spirit of our discussion during the planning and zoning. So, thank you.
Excellent. Yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to address council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to council for any additional discussion or possible motion?
Mayor?
Yeah, councilmember Campbell, please.
I moved to direct planning staff to develop the appropriate changes to the Lake Havasu City Development Code Title 14 that clarifies and establishes new language where necessary to address metallic exteriors on quality commercial structures, consisting with option five listed in the staff's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion from councilmember Campbell, a second from Vice Mayor Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. And again, I know I mentioned at the beginning of this public hearing, but that was our code working to allow our councilmembers to have things on the agenda, and it worked. I mean, we had a great conversation about two things that were, that came at us through two different sections of our code on how to get things on the agenda. All right, we'll move on to item eight, which is our call to the public. This is the opportunity where citizens have to address the city council on items within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. Your comments are limited to three minutes. You can make your way to the podium, state your name for the record. Again, there is the light indicator box next to Ms. Williams. Green means you have time. Yellow means you have one minute remaining, and red means that your three minutes is up. Again, we can't have a two-way conversation, so we can listen intently. We may be able to direct staff, or we can respond to any criticism, but we won't be able to have any two-way conversations. With that being said, would anyone like to address the city council during call to the public?
I didn't introduce myself the last time. I think most of you know me. Don Wisdom, resident of Lake Havasu City. I talked to you last time about when I went to Hawaii and they had these speed bumps, where they marked very clearly, you're going to have a bump. And I, and we have an alley behind our luxurious condo complex we have, and there's a blind spot. As you're going to get onto the alley, you really can't see anything to your, to your right. And there's two other avenues to the alley, and they're not as bad as the one. So how do I go about getting some speed bumps on our alley so the traffic is slower and less dangerous to especially me driving out onto the alley and all the other people who live there? There was another comment, oh, I know what it was. I'm going to wait for coffee with the mayor. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council, city manager. I noticed, oh, I know, I noticed that on the city's Facebook page the other day, there was a link to go to the bridge feasibility study, and you were allowed to give comment. And it was called a survey. Usually, when I expect a survey, I'm thinking that it was going to ask me a bunch of questions. It didn't ask me any questions. It said, please make a comment and submit, which I did. It was really great, fun. I gave my thoughts. And out of curiosity, I asked a friend of mine who lives in another state if they were allowed to give their thoughts on the feasibility study. And it turns out, my friend, who lives in a totally different state, doesn't even live in Havasu, was able to give their thoughts on the feasibility study, I mean, on the bridge. And there's no distinction in the comment section as to whether or not a person is a citizen of Lake Havasu City or a citizen of... of Facebook World, because, you know, there's over a billion people in Facebook land that could access the study and answer the comments, and there's no way to know who is commenting from either Havasu or elsewhere. Second, I just wanted to mention, I listened to the coffee with the mayor the other day, and even though I wasn't here, and I heard my favorite person on the entire planet say something that sometimes we have to, what was it, annoy? Yes, it was you, okay, I forget exactly what it said, but it said, sometimes you have to repeat things again and again, and annoyance and persistence, great. I would just like to remind you, I am of the opinion that during the summer, you need to lower the rates of the aquatic center for the kids, just the kids, okay? For the kids, you lower the rates, I don't care about free businesses, oh, one more super quick thing, the London Bridge, beautiful bridge, some days you have lights on it, some days you don't, some of those days that you have lights on, I totally understand why you have the lights on, other days, totally no lights. I was thinking it'd be really fun if you all decided to maybe offer sponsorships to businesses to like, maybe give you guys some money and light the bridge up in their honor and post it on your Facebook, hey, we're going to put the Marine Association color lights on the bridge.
Thank you, Ms. Toy. Yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council during Call to the Public?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, you'll forgive me if I'm a little nervous, it's the first time doing this. My name is Richard Rudis, and I'm up here to speak on, recently I had applied to fill a vacancy on a board, and I've been working with the city clerk, and she's very personal, easy to work with, and I've had a pleasant, pleasant experience. But I was declined because the email had said that I was not a resident of Lake Havasu City, my address is Lake Havasu City, 86404. I do realize that I live in one of the unincorporated areas, I guess they're called, Lake Havasu Heights, and so I just wanted to come and address the council and see, get some clarification on that, are we, are we qualified to serve, being that we do all of our business here in, in, within the city? Our USPS comes out of the city, MVD, our shopping, recreation, you know, our daily activities are here, we work here, we own businesses here, and so I just wanted to kind of get some clarification and guidance from you, Mr. Mayor, and, and the city council on that, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we'll be, we'll be available after the meeting, and I can have a discussion with you.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council during Call to the Public? Seeing them, we'll close the Call to the Public. The next item is current events, are there any council committee reports?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
For the Airport Advisory Board, we have Robert Kane, who is our new airport manager, and so we will probably be starting up with some of our airport advisory meetings here soon, so hopefully we'll have some updates, so.
Yeah, nice.
We just want to welcome him to Lake Havasu, glad to have you.
All right, future meetings, our next meeting will be Tuesday, February 27, 2024, at 5:30 PM, it'll be a regular meeting, and then on Tuesday, March 12, 2024, at 5:30 PM, we will also have a regular meeting. Item 11, are there any future discussion items? All right, item 12, most to adjourn? We are adjourned, thank you for being us, being here, be kind, we'll see you next time.